Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the zoning and planning board. Like everyone who arrives, it's a pleasure to be here.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given by the Borough Clerk in the following manner. Post is on the bulletin board in the Borough Clerk's office, emailed to retrospect and the carrier post. Do we have roll call, please, Mrs. Pinto?
Yes. Chairwoman, Cleaney-Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Here.
Ms. Gushen.
Here.
Mr. Pachowski.
Here.
Mr. Vinala.
Here.
Mr. Stone, excuse me.
Mr. LeBurdie.
Here.
Mayor Kapatis.
Here.
Mr. Rannieri.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
And Mr. May.
Here.
Good, thank you. There's a motion to order for the approval of the minutes of the August 9th meeting. Are there any questions or concerns with the minutes? Have a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion, second.
All right. Mr. Vinala and Mr. Ockley, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. I have nothing on whole business, but let's see what else does. New business. We have application 18-07. This application is for a bulk variance, building garage, block 93, lot 19, 43 East South, 11th Avenue. We're going to ask the applicant to come up. Right there, sir. Yes, sir.
Derek? Good. Please, ladies, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm testimony you're about to give this board this evening is truthful and accurate, to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Okay. Tell us about your application.
I just want to go garage for, I have a couple cars and just running out of room. Basically, that's it.
Okay.
Is this in R1 district or R?
This is R1.
For R1? Okay. So the maximum permitted in R1, if I remember correctly, is 16 by 24?
16 by 24.
12 foot. Derek, how high? Did you submit plans as far as the dimensions of the buildings, other than the floor dimensions? How high do you want it to be?
In the center, it would be 14 foot. In the center.
So you'd be looking at two bulk variances. And I think R1, according to his plans, he comes within the side door setback to set.
Yes, yeah. The setbacks are fine. It's the size and height.
Size and height.
Yes.
Do we have questions at this point? Sure. So Derek, a two-car garage? I mean, two doors. You know, the only concern I have is obviously the pitch of the roof seems pretty. I mean, how high would the garage door be? Eight feet, nine feet?
Well, yeah, eight foot.
It's eight-foot garage door and then six, eight feet, or did you say 14? So it's only six feet above that. The only thing I'll say is we've been looking at these ordinance to maybe change it because the height seems pretty unreasonable. I think our current ordinance is only allows for 12 feet high. So that makes it a very shallow pitched roof. So, you know, like I said, if they didn't submit any drawings at this point, I think we should have at least a little, at least my opinion is to have a little more latitude on the pitch of the roof. I think that the issue that we had was properties that weren't big enough. Looking at his site plan or his survey, obviously shows that he's got a decent-sized lot compared to a lot of the other properties in the R1 itself.
Are you familiar with the area? I think that there's one right across the street from one that's oversized too, and that would probably be built in 477. It was probably built in the 40s, I believe. Two-ball garage. It doesn't even have the setback that's needed. So this is where I'm probably going to.
Derek, what's the addition to the area instead of what we're currently looking at? What's the closest residence to your garage? Not to your house, but to the garage?
So it would be on Phil's, your closest. So you mean where the house ends?
No, where the garage is going to be, are we going to be close to someone else's home?
No, it's back power now. No, it's backyards. It's all backyards over there.
We're just dating for the test. Put it for the record.
The 36-foot wide, is that the front of the garage?
Yes.
So that's a three car?
Well, I was on the two, and that's the regular door.
Okay.
So I don't look at three cars.
So just two doors?
Just two doors and then a regular access door. Yes.
Were you proposing a second story, you mean?
No. It's going to be all of them.
You know, just some quick numbers. Are you looking at the A-frame? Is it an A-frame? Are you looking at the A-frame to be on the side, on the 30-foot area?
Be a peak, I think, a little.
But I mean, on the 30-foot or on the 36-foot side? On the 30-foot side, right?
Well, no, 36 is quite so.
I think it's 18.
So maybe it's, yeah, it could start to.
Think it's 18.
Yeah, and that's what, oh, you think the peak would be?
I think it's 18.
Okay. I'm just saying, I mean, if it was a, guys, if it's a 612 pitch, John, you know, that's not even a real steep roof. 612 pitch would be at least eight or nine feet above, you know, 10 foot. That's why I say we've been reviewing this ordinance. So just so everybody knows, council's been looking at this, and we felt that 12 feet was way too low. I apologize for having passed the ordinance yet. I apologize for the shake. But, you know, even though the applicant's only asking for a 16-foot, I think we really have considered that. The ordinance is probably going to be closer to 18 feet for the height. So if you're going to submit the construction plans, I think we ought to be a little more careful with it. I don't think there's any real concerns. Anybody have any questions about this board coming to the public?
Are you planning on having a paved driveway?
No, it's just a, yes.
New curb cut?
Huh? New curb cut? No. No, I have a driveway here. Brick pavers. It's all the way in the back.
The survey doesn't show the curb cuts ever since, John.
It shows, it does show a small driveway.
So from the, from the driveway, the brick pavers to the new proposed garage, is that what you're saying?
It's all three-quarter inch, so it's, uh...
But you have a driveway now, right?
Yeah, in the front.
So it'll just continue on?
It's just, yeah, it's a driveway, but the pavement goes to the center.
Right.
So it's grain in there, so.
Any other questions, professionals?
No question.
Any other questions?
The side door, the, is it going to match the house?
Yeah, it's going to be flat, it matches the house.
Oh, a floor? Metal?
Well, at this point in time, we're going to open the meeting up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter and this matter only, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Second, please.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ockley, second by Mayor Kapatis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The floor course is now closed. Mr. Rowan.
Yes, Madam Chairman of the Board, this is an application that comes before us tonight for, by Mr. Starks, and he's requesting permission to construct a 30 by 36-foot garage in an R1 zone where a maximum is 16 by 24. He's also requesting relief to have a height for the garage at its peak, 14 feet, where our ordinance has a maximum of 12 feet height. He's testified that there is not going to be any second story to this garage, which is prohibited in an R1 zone. So he'd be voting for two bulk variances. Everybody can vote, Mayor and John, since it's not a C-variant, so just need a vote.
Got a question. Did you say?
Well, I'd like to make, well, the motion I'd like to make is approve a 30 by 36-foot garage with an 18-foot, up to an 18-foot.
Okay.
Ridge.
Up to an 18-foot height.
Height, yes.
Whereas the, our ordinance sets the maximum at 12.
Yeah.
There was also, I think, testimony, not given by the applicant, by the board, but we're in the middle of reorganizing, I mean, rebuilding our ordinance.
Yes.
The minimum heights are probably going to go up.
Yes. Okay, so that's the motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Mayor Kapatis, and second by Mr. Rannieri. Do we have roll call, please?
Chairwoman Cleaney-Hamlin.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Pachowski.
Yes.
Mr. Vinala.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Mr. LeBurdie.
Yes.
Mr. Rannieri.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes. Right there. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Well, enjoy your concert. Take care now.
See you.
Okay, next we have application 18-08. This application is for a use variance, change from office to commercial, block 113, lot 3, for 102 East Cummins Bridge Road. This was originally, I think, Mr. Rowan, they were speaking something about changing the zoning, and we explained to them that that's not under our purview.
That's correct. That's what their actual application should be, is a use variance. I reviewed the applicant's notice to the public, and she doesn't mention use variance. So I think we can hear it. The only thing, I believe, that was not submitted with the, with the application for the board's consideration was a site plan, as far as questions regarding parking.
Right. And myself and Mr. Rannieri need to step down, I guess, at this point?
Uh, since this is a, you think, yes.
Okay. There's nothing against. We will. So we will see Mr. White as the, he's the first alternate?
Uh, no, he can't.
No, we can't. That's come out.
Is it for Larry Stone?
Yes.
It's for Larry Stone? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. White, we vote you on this application, but not Mrs. Dodd.
And just for the matter of record, yeah, Mr. White's going to be sitting.
Mr. Stone. Ms. Young. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Welcome.
Ms. Young, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm that the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. Okay.
You're requesting that this board consider a use change to allow a dance studio, is that correct? A off, a zone that's owned for general office and not for commercial use?
Correct.
Okay. You can present your argument to the board.
Um, so I've lived and run amuse all my life, and I've always had a lot of run amuse to do dance and activities, other than what the school provided. So I had a studio and had a height, and I said, well, what better way to come back to run amuse? Take a spot that's been vacant for seven-plus years, give you guys a holiday, I don't only plan on being here this year, but for the long term. And give something back to the community, as well as the children, to have somewhere to go, to express the arts and creativity in many different ways.
Great. Sounds good. Um, I visited the site. I certainly don't have a problem with the use you're proposing. I think it's an applicable thing to do. I think you're absolutely right, it would be an asset to the community, as well as to the town, you know, for a rateable. Um, there's a couple things. I know Mr. Garafalo still owns the property. I was concerned about the steps on the front, they're in a state of disrepair. Before you go open the dance studio, would you or Mr. Garafalo be intending upon getting those steps repaired?
I can, I can get them repaired.
Okay. And the, yeah, that's just some nonsense, some trash cans, nothing on the right side of the building.
On the side. I plan on cleaning up the property as well. I've been working on the outside as much as I can, branding the rain and.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Different, but.
You know, what, I mean, it's just, how many candidates for advanced classes are you going to have at any given time?
Um, I usually, I run in two classes a night, so between, I want to say, maybe 20 kids at the most in the building.
Okay, that's fine. Um, do you have any contingency plans with either the parking lot of the Hair Hut or the parking lot of Cobblestone?
I have reached out to the owner of the Hair Hut. I've still reached out to her to see if I can use the back end of the parking space.
The Cobblestone property or the Hair Hut property?
The Hair Hut.
Hair Hut's across the street, and then you have that Cobblestone Systems property right behind your building.
Yes, I have reached out to the Hair Hut, I have reached out to the Cobblestone, because I didn't know how far their parking lot went.
Okay. Because we're definitely concerned, you know, about parking, because you obviously don't have any.
Yeah, I understand. And a lot of my parents, like my kids are older, so most of my parking be on Saturdays. Like my older kids, your parents drop, and they go. They don't want to sit in there, they don't want to watch some games. They want to drop my parents and come back.
But at this point in time, you don't have any approvals from the owners of Hair Hut or the owners of Cobblestone Systems to allow you to park there for certain areas of certain hours of operation?
Right.
Were they receptive, or you haven't?
Um, she said that we just haven't, our schedules have been mixing to get together.
Okay. Um, assuming you're not changing the footprint of the building whatsoever, are you doing any alterations to the inside of the building?
Um, I'm just laying, laminating the floor, and that's about it. Everything that was up to date, the owner had previously, I guess, did it prior to me getting the building, so it's just.
Mr. White, have you recently given a CO on that property? Have you jumped in the inside of the property?
Yeah.
I went by, all the windows were just open and whatnot, I didn't go inside. But I guess at the front steps, you're definitely in disrepair.
If approval was given for this use already, you would conduct a certificate, take a look at the inspection, and if you're next year open.
So that would be Mr. Garafalo's responsibility, not yours.
Okay.
He's the owner of the property, so we're not, no knock on you, but we want to make sure that the premises is up for, you know, safe lock.
That's, understood.
Are there bathrooms on the premises?
There is one bathroom, on the lower level.
As in working water?
Yes.
You would be using the house section or the one with the front section?
It is one office building. It's just, it's two stories, but it's one building. Like, there's no house.
Okay.
It's just all, it's all office building. Yeah, you're talking about the mansion that I think over here, that has, you know, it's the one right across from the police station.
Jackie, are you with the lease with the owner now?
Um, I do.
And how long of the?
I'm doing a rent, a rent-to-own. I'm currently in a lease to rent-to-own. Like I said, I don't plan on just being here this year.
You said the lease purchase?
Yes.
Provision?
Yes. I don't plan on being here now. I plan on staying for the community.
Jackie, your site in Haddon Heights, you said you had one there, right? Does it mean to park in there?
No, I was on King's Highway. There's never any parking on King's Highway. So it was like park across the street, walk across the street.
Ever had any issues?
Oh, no. Parents parked across the street, walked across the street, you know, it never, I never had a problem.
Well, it's fortunate that the Hair Hut does have, absolutely, oversized lot. The Hair Hut, definitely oversized lot, so I would hope that they would be receptive to you. What are your hours of operation going to be?
Um, I will be opening up usually between 5:30 and 6:00, to about 8:30. And then my Saturdays run from like 10:00 to 6:30. And mostly, it's just evenings right now, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, and then Saturday. So it's only four days out of the week.
That's fine. I, you know, that's, you know, like I said, they have an oversized lot there, so I would hope that they would be receptive to that. Any other questions from the board?
I mean, my biggest concern is the building, not you. The building itself. It's been vacant for seven, 10 years. I know if it had animals in it, it had stripped of its copper and everything else, you know, at one time when I had it, I had it for sale. It was bare. So again, if you're going into an agreement with him, but I think, I'm not telling you what to do, but you definitely want to keep it out there and make sure it sticks out before you do anything.
Okay.
Any other professionals?
Jackie, if you can make an arrangement with the adjacent property for parking, how would the parent, where would the parents stop to drop their kids off? Would they have to stop on Cummins Bridge Road?
Um, I wouldn't. I mean, even just for the drop.
Yeah. Yes.
Think more to Lindsay. Try to Lindsay.
Yes, for it.
Yeah, there's a decent amount of parking that won't Lindsay.
Most of them, like I said, they'll drop, and that's what my policy has to be. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen. If our parents want to stay and watch their child dance, I don't want to make a provision if they can't do that. That's, we just hopefully, we can just hope that the, the Hair Hut.
My goal is to help them and help me, you know, they're there, they go across the street, you know.
Yeah.
Help themselves.
Any other questions from the board? At this point in time, we're going to open the meeting up to the public. Anyone from the public that is here to speak on this matter and this matter only, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Second of the public? Who wants to come up? I make a motion to close the public portion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ockley, second by Ms. Gushen. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Rowan.
Yes, Ms. Young, I'm announcing before this board that tonight, Madam Chairman, a member from the board to grant us permission to operate a dance studio at 102 East Cummins Bridge Road, which is located in a general office district. She has given her reasons, and apparently, if the board is satisfied, this is, this is a good use for the community, and by that, to our community, you can, you can take that in consideration in making a determination of whether the use variance would be granted. Anytime there is a use variance, you know that the board has the right to place conditions on that variance. It seems that the only condition that the board has indicated that would be placed on this, and the applicant has agreed, would be the applicant will repair the, I guess, front steps as a check of the property. And it is subject to our inspector going over there and giving a clear certificate that the building is, if it's rocky, and so would be the condition.
And also, I mean, I was there at a time where it was still light out, so I wasn't able to ascertain the condition of lighting in front of the building. There was, I think, two socket lights, Keith, where the, where the front has, like, it has like two front barn doors, where the steps are, it's like two front barn doors. And the only lighting I saw there, I believe, was like two small socket lights. So we might need to look at that when it's dark out to see if that's going to be ample for safety, like the kids and the parents to be going up and down the stairs.
Well, it will require egress lighting, both under normal power and also under backup power.
Yeah.
The exterior of the building is, there's discharge, so that the lighting and the exits are illuminated.
And again, I didn't see it in the evening, so I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it looked to me like it was probably not sufficient of what you're going to, you're basically turning in a public building. You know what I mean, for use for, for public use. So you don't want to have somebody, you know, tripping and falling, and become a hindrance and a liability for you. So again, that's something I'm sure that Mr. Garafalo would have to meet those conditions under the inspection.
Okay.
What happens if we grant this? I'm not real thrilled about keeping it commercial.
It's not going to be commercial, we're not changing zoning.
No. It's staying in the general office.
Only.
So if another use came in, then they would have to go through the same process that the Young did.
All right.
This is one use.
One, one use, okay. We're not changing the zoning.
All right.
Now, we can't do.
That's not under our purview. That has to go under Mayor Kapatis.
Yeah, okay.
Change, change zoning. So we're just changing this one use. If Ms. Young decides she wants, she wants to move out, you know, next year, and Mr. Garafalo, if someone wants to put, you know, you know, karate plates in there, that person has to come before us for another use change.
If somebody wanted to come in, then with a dance studio, with Ms. Young, that would be, we've given her a variance.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, on our data motion on the court? Accept the application, is ready?
We have a motion to accept the application, is ready.
Except.
Mr. Ockley and Ms. Gushen, do we have roll call, please?
Chairwoman Cleaney-Hamlin.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen, yes. Mr. Pachowski.
Yes.
Mr. Vinala.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Mr. LeBurdie.
Yes.
And Mr. White.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Jackie, I wouldn't open up for 45 days, because a member of the public has a right to a PO's decision.
Okay.
So if you went in here and you stored it and reversed our decision, and then taken, so I'm just, you want me to count 45 days?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Is your mayor, Mr. Johnson?
Dragon.
Dragon.
Dragon. Yeah.
I'm going to have the pizza back.
Mayor, it's another use variance.
It's a use.
It's a use.
I guess I don't have the SEDs, we'll have to change that ordinance. All right, we're going to back, we'll keep talking.
You got to go again.
Do a good job.
Leave that out here. Do that out here. I'm going to go back.
It's another use. It's another use.
It means that.
All right, next we have application 18-09. This is an application for a use variance, operate residential healthcare facility and adult daycare on block 135, lot 32, at 109 East 9th Avenue. And also, just for application, Mr. White, if we determine we want to vote this evening, Mr. White will be voting in Mr. Stone's place. Okay, John. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Bernstein, Lieutenant General, Alredwin Bernstein, of the application. As you're aware, this is an application to convert currently vacant, I rose, excuse me, Highlights Hotel, at 109 East 9th Avenue, for a senior housing and also a senior daycare use, located on the ground floor. I would, rather than do a detailed presentation, I would refer to Mr. Jack Brandt of Tapp Street Company, he's in charge of the project, to address the general issues about the company, you know, the purpose of the project, what we intend to achieve, and also Mr. Michael Nysley, who's our technical engineer, to address the specific issues that are raised.
Thank you, Dan.
Gentlemen, did you please stand? Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm that the testimony you're going to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, to the best of your knowledge.
I do.
Okay, go, which is the first? Name and address, please.
My name is Jack Brandt, B-R-E-N-T, Principal of Tapp Street, Senior Management in Minneapolis. We're located at 2001 Kilburn Drive, Livingston, Minnesota. We are located, just for your information, directly across from All America, which is near you. We are a company that's involved in the development, management, ownership of senior housing properties and multifamily housing properties throughout the United States. We have numerous projects that are similar in concept under construction. We are involved in both new construction, as well as adaptive reuse of existing properties. In some cases, such as in this situation, the current property is a hotel that has been closed for some period of time. We do not think the hotel market is a good market in this particular area for a variety of reasons. We think it's a good market for an adaptive reuse to senior housing project. And we are proposing to create a independent living, senior housing facility, and an adult daycare facility. Again, our company is the manager, the owner, and the operator of these projects. We have a staff that would provide all management, who would be continually involved with the project from the very beginning, and we are proven with long-term orders of properties as well. A recent acquisition, as an example, was the acquisition of the Embassy Suites in Pittsburgh, 225-unit project we acquired that developed for $25 million. We are in the process of converting that now to a system living, daycare. We're also actually building a senior housing center for Moon Township. Moon would operate the facility for the programming, staffing, and so forth, so it's a very large project, we think, very needed by the community. We typically work with a variety of professionals in the development of these projects. Our banker has generally been, most recently, BBNT, which is the, I think, the ninth-largest financial institution in the country. We also work with a variety of other professionals, including Michael Nysley of Vice Hill Design. We also work with a variety of other professionals, including Michael Nysley of Diceville Design. And we're excited about this development. We think there's a market, we've worked with a company called Plan Moran, which is a CPA group that specializes in senior housing consulting nationally. They've concluded there's a fairly strong market for independent living with services. But they will also conduct a financial forecast for us in conjunction with the forecast that we will do internally. So we've done a fair amount of due diligence to date. It's a very strong project, and we're hopeful that we can answer any questions tonight you might have regarding the development. Again, it's for individuals who have some need for services, albeit somewhat more independent in nature. We would have a home healthcare service, provide services on an as-needed basis, so theoretically, the residents could remain in the facility, in a home, for an extended period of time, and sort of age in place, if you will. We have some examples and exhibits as well of the development. Michael Nysley will start showing some of those exhibits. Each of the units, there are 176 units in the property originally. That was then reduced to about 146 units by combining some of the hotel rooms, two rooms into an executive kind of suite. We're proposing 120 to 122 units comprised of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And each unit then would have a full kitchen as well, which is proposed in that rendering. We would complete a new kitchen and new appliances, hardwood floors, et cetera, in each unit, so essentially it'd be a fully reconditioned new unit. We would also do a fair amount of work on the first floor. Currently, the building is a full-service hotel or has operated as such in the past, so we would utilize the kitchen, provide meals on, three meals per day, restaurant style, which is typical of the kinds of projects we're involved in. We would also provide a variety of activities, and we would also provide transportation to various areas throughout the community. Michael, any other questions on the type of product we're doing? This shows, by the way, just a rendered unit plan.
Mr. Brandt, just a couple of questions. When Tapestry, when they put this project together, you are the owner and the operator?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So it's not like, we have places like senior care around here, and we have adult day living in this area, and there are like a number of different facilities, they're much smaller than what, you know, what you're looking at. So you would not be doing this project and then looking to sell it to someone else?
No, we operate as the developer, as the owner and the manager long-term.
Okay, great.
By the way, we've had a feasibility study tonight, as I indicated, and it indicates there's a fairly strong demand for this product type in this marketplace.
I think it's a great use.
We agree, this particular building, I think, you know, doesn't operate very efficiently as a hotel in this marketplace. It operates well for the type of product that we're doing. We are very experienced in the adaptive reuse of buildings like this to senior housing and multifamily housing. And this fits a lot of the boxes in terms of a full commercial kitchen, a fair amount of common space in the first floor. I think the addition of adult daycare will also be a strong component of the project. So the building itself works well for our particular kind of use.
I think it's just exciting because, you know, mine and I will talk about, you know, because there's so many laws closing and things, all these boxwords are closing. But you conceivably have, you know, like a hair, a hair studio, you know, for the people, you could have, you know, a movie room for the people, there's a lot of things you can, I mean, I think it's a very, very important thing, as people are aging in place, like you said, that our population is getting older, and by the grace of God, they're living longer. So I think it's really important that they have, you know, functionality and they have places to go and things to do to make them feel like they're still, you know, viable assets to the community.
We agree.
Yeah, it's really great. I mean, I do a lot of work on senior care buses and things, and I see it all the time, and you just see the people, they're just so, you know, they're just so more vibrant when they're doing something every day.
We agree.
What is the percentage of assisted living?
Well, there is no assisted living per se, it's independent living, it's classified as a residential healthcare facility in the state of New Jersey. And so there's no assisted living per se. Any services that would be provided, would be provided by either our staff or a third party that could provide services on an as-needed basis.
And that would be an I use institutional type of use, that I use for, yeah?
Michael?
Yes. Yes, as a residential healthcare facility, it would be.
Sorry, sorry, you're naming it.
Oh, Michael Nysley, Architect of Diceville Design.
Thank you.
Yes, I want, so it'd be, the use would change from an R1 transient hotel living to an I1, much more permanent resident, and with the, the New Jersey code has a special carve-out for residential healthcare communities, and this is, this is an ideal kind of for that.
Now, we have had occasion to somehow have some residents ask us about, number one, is it going to be age restricted, is it going to be 55 and over, first of all?
Yes.
Okay. Some of the residents were just concerned that it may, you know, some, unfortunately, some people, they have methadone clinics and things, and some of these facilities, and it's a viable question that the residents asked, and I just want to hear it out of your mouth that that is or is not going to happen? Not that it's going to affect the, I just want to know, yes or no?
No, it's not going to be used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Will there be medical staff on the location at all times? Is that how that?
No, there'll be a nurse and then other staff people that would provide caregiver support, yes.
Is that oversight by the state as far as the nurses concerned?
I don't believe so, no.
So who's in charge of the oversight for the medical care?
Well, the president of our company is a person named Dr. Terry Paulina, and she operates as the principal in our company, and then she also coordinates all licensing and so forth with each state that we're involved in. We're in a lot of different states, and there are different regulations for each state.
So when you say you might have a nurse on staff, that gentleman or lady is going to be a licensed RN in the state of New Jersey?
I'm not sure about that.
Would you have the percentage of the people utilizing the nurses, or is it going to be, like, mostly, like you said, seniors, active, active seniors coming down, being able to move without ability? The reason I'm asking is, we do fire any of us, I'm just looking at the potential of responses to that, to that location.
Right.
And you said, no, just, we need to know this information upfront, so we can better prepare if approval's given, and.
Right, this is a little different than the typical project that we're involved in. We typically are involved in assisted living and memory care and various other forms of rehabilitation, for example. This is an independent living facility, and people, the average person, for example, at our existing residences is about 83 or 84, 85, in that range, and they are in dire need of assistance. This is for an independent living person that has some future need or modern need for assistance. So assistance with activities of daily living would be provided on an as-needed basis, which is somewhat unique. The costs are somewhat less than assisted living and memory care, certainly, so someone can really pay for what they actually need as opposed to having a more universal.
Obrant, yes.
Yes, correct.
Well, and we do, luckily, I'll have two urgent care, two urgent care facilities right within a mile of your, proximity of your property you're looking at. We have, we have two, the Med Express and a Cooper, and we also have, I believe, two doctor's offices right here and now, you know, so if someone were, if the need were to arise, or someone would need something more than what the on-staff, you know, facilitator could be involved, I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem, but, yeah, taken care of.
I have a question about the medical staff, or the nurse, or nurses that you may have on site. So Candy, I just wanted to jump in to, when you asked a question about, will they go to New Jersey Board of Nursing? If you're going to have a registered RN, you have to, I just, I happen to work with New Jersey Boards of Nursing now, or the Boards, Boards of Nursing, you know, with my job throughout the United States. So I'm just curious as to, you know, there's certain regulations and everything that have to be met if you're going to say, hey, I have RNs.
No, I don't, I don't, that's not my area of expertise, it would be the area of expertise of our president of the management company, and she would ensure that we were compliant with any New Jersey regulation.
Okay.
Do you anticipate that as a residence, medical condition deteriorates, they would have to leave?
No, the issue would be, they would be able to essentially remain in place or age in place, and services would be provided on an as-needed basis to them. That's the concept.
So they're more than independent then?
They would be able, they would initially be more independent as they arrived in the facility, and then as they needed services, we would have services provided for them.
So we could transition to, into assisted living, what's commonly the understanding of assisted living?
Correct, except those services would be provided by a third-party home healthcare company.
Would it ever, could it be then transitioned into like a nursing home?
No.
Okay, so if somebody, an elderly person got worse or deteriorated, they may have to leave to go to a nursing home facility?
That's correct, and that's correct in an assisted living project as well, correct. A good example of a similar project is a project called Yardley Commons in Orias. That's about 95% occupied at this point in time. It's somewhat aged, and that would be a good example of a competitive facility.
How, I guess, my question, I guess monetarily, is what are the, what are the costs of the facilities for the residents, how's that, how's it aged?
Well, first of all, in terms of the renovation, the current budget's about $5 million.
The cost, the cost to the residents, sir?
Right.
Not our residents, I mean, the cost to the people that are going to be staying there.
So what's the cost to rent, have a studio, or a one-bedroom, or a two-bedroom?
Yeah, a studio would rent for between $2,200 and $2,500. A one-bedroom would rent for $2,900 to about $3,100, and a two-bedroom would be somewhat more expensive than that. You know, that compared, for example, to an assisted living facility in this marketplace, it's, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 less.
And how do the residents, and I don't like people saying residents, I mean, how do the, how do the occupants pay for that use, except their insurance, insurance companies? Does Medicare, Medicaid enter play, or does it all private pay by their?
Well, we're trying to sort that out with the New Jersey regulations right now. You know, we would optimize, obviously, any programs that were available to residents, but generally speaking, we are involved primarily in private pay. There is some component that would be a Medicaid component, for example, but for the most part, it's a private pay program. But we would accept, as an example, the VA program as a special program that provides assistance. Medicare's in the process of providing additional assistance to adult daycare residents as an example, so it's an ever-changing landscape, but we would certainly try and optimize all the programs that are available.
I assume it's for profit?
Correct. We hope so, yes, right?
But also, studio, one-bedroom, two, are they, is it a yearly lease? Well, I'm just trying to familiarize myself. How's it?
There's an entrance fee that would be an assessment, essentially, and that fee is in the area of $2,500 to about $3,000 for our facility, if approved, as well as other ones. And those are the types of costs that we have.
So you're saying it's a month-to-month type of thing, there's no contract where they have to stay for a year or two years?
Correct, yeah.
There's no contract?
There's a, there's a monthly rental agreement, yes, but there's no long-term lease agreement.
So the entry fee is held by a escrow for them?
No, that's, that's applied as part of the assessment and application process.
Processing fee?
Yeah. The fee, excuse me?
Projects who weren't sized in early times, that's given out, rooms, rooms of residents?
It's a similar size, yes.
You said you're going to have about 120 units, sir?
I think 122 is the number currently, yes, right.
Freddie, do we have working elevators in that building?
I don't know after, I don't know, I don't remember. Working? Oh, have to be working. They're currently off because of the, there's some water damage in the, in the building, and so they're turned off.
There's three total, Freddie?
Yeah, there's three, two residents in service.
Yeah, yeah, and it's gurney-sized and so forth, so we're, to get back to your earlier question, type, use group I1, condition two, which is modest need for some assistance to exit the building and so forth in the event of an emergency, so that's the classification that would be applying, submitting plans, I guess.
John, did you want to go through your letter this evening, or do you want to give the?
Sure, we only had a couple of issues. Our letter's dated September 11. Page two, we have some checklist items, but there are more in line with the site plan application, not really the use variance. I'm not sure what's requested this evening. Use variance, assisted use variance?
Yep.
Okay, so on page three, we show what needs to be documented for the proofs for the use variance, which is typical for other applications for the board. With respect to the specific comments, our biggest concern, our biggest question was parking requirements, just to make sure that the existing site has sufficient parking for the proposed use, and it's not going to overload the, you know, the facilities. I do note that they did submit an architectural site plan that showed some changes to the site, some widening of landscape islands, a new entrance area, so they are, they will have 160 million parking spaces after the improvements to the site are completed, so we just need some testimony.
We can do, we can do the site plan here.
I think that's more, more, more in line with the use stuff than what you're, they're asking you to allow different use, so you want to make sure that the facilities.
Right, it's a common, yeah. I just mean as far as.
The islands and that.
I think that's something as far as the islands and the poppers and things.
I just wanted them to provide some testimony on what they believe the parking means will be, to make sure that the use variance can be granted.
And how many employees are you going to have, sir? Possibly?
I would estimate about 40 employees. We would, we would, we're in the process of compiling our updated pro forma, that would include a full schedule of payroll for the facility. A typical assisted living project, for example, of this size would have about 80 to 90 units of employees. We would expect somewhere in the area of 35 to 40.
And I also seem to say that as far as the, the adult daycare, you're probably facilitating shuttle buses to bring the people in back and forth, or?
That decision is still in process, but typically, transportation is provided, correct?
Yeah, John? The parking issue, we. Yeah, John, the parking issue, we, based on, there's studies, actually, I can share that with you, that were, that've been prepared for specifically looking at senior housing facilities, ranging from independent living to assisted living and nursing homes. And the, it was presented at a, at a conference, I can't remember, one of the, for transportation. And the, the end result was that for these facilities, you end up with a need of about .4 parking spaces per dwelling unit. And we're, for that, we're well over that. It's usually what we find is if we are taking a hotel facility, we can eliminate parking right around the building, for instance, and turn that into landscaping. And that usually gets us down into the .5 parking spaces per, per resident. Because they typically are not going to be driving vehicles as much. They would do so more in this facility than in the assisted living, but we are still well over what, what that would be.
So yeah, even with like Sunday visitors, I would think we'd have more than ample parking, you know?
Yep.
As far as the daycare, who do you anticipate the, the number of people that would come in to use that part of the facility on a daily basis?
We're estimating between 50 and 75 as the maximum. I think realistically, it's somewhat less than that. There are various types of adult daycare classifications at the state. We're still looking at the type of classification that would be. So we're still in the programming phase for the adult daycare.
Is that a five-day week, I'm sorry?
Oh, excuse me.
Is that a five-day week program, sir, or a seven-day week program?
We are thinking five days a week.
Thank you.
That's okay. So I'm just trying to, you know, spread the numbers here. So you've got a, you're looking at 120 units for the residents, not including the daycare, right? So in addition, maybe 50 to 75 per day?
Correct.
Okay, so upwards of maybe 200 people per facility on a daily basis?
If it's fully, right?
If it's fully.
Correct.
And you brought, you have any, anywhere else in the country that you run this, this site, not assisted living, but what you're proposing?
The projects that we're doing currently that are adaptive reuse projects, similar to this development in Runnymede, is, they're typically assisted living and memory care projects. The project we're doing in Pittsburgh, which was formerly an EWC suite, we are building another 100 units of independent living that would be attached via Skyway to that four-story structure. So we will be involved in independent living. The assisted living, correct. And we, in the past, yes, we have operated independent, assisted, and memory care together currently.
This facility is particularly well-suited to this use because, it just left out here. But we're proposing, if the adult daycare model works, works out, we're proposing a separate entrance for that. And that's where the parking changes were taking place, and the drive and so forth, so we could enhance that. What is side entrance to what was the banquet room there in that hotel? That would be expanded, and that would be the, it almost can operate independently of the rest of the facility, too. And it has good circulation, exiting bathrooms that are separate from the rest of the facility. It's quite nice, actually.
And we'll have, obviously, we'll have handicap access at all, all the entrances and whatnot?
Yes, yes. We, we generally don't go with the minimum amount required because.
The age?
Because of the age of population, so we.
ADA all over.
We emphasize that.
So I'm just curious, when, when would, say, a memory care person wind up going from assisted living into nursing care? Is that, on a case basis?
Alzheimer's patient or dementia patient?
Yeah, you say you, you have someone that's in assisted living because they, they might be having early signs of dementia. At what point would they be concerned when they don't, they can only care for their basic needs, or?
Well, usually, that's an enhanced evaluation.
We have monthly assessments for all of the residents.
And who does the assessment?
A nurse or a doctor.
Are there going to be any social workers there?
I'm sorry?
Social workers there for the accommodations?
We're still programming that component. I would think there would be, yes, but we're still working on that.
Would that ring true for rehab as well? I mean, if people?
At this time, we don't have a rehab program proposed for the facility. For other projects, we have, we are a third-party group to provide that service.
Yeah, I mean, I know that they, they come in with transport vehicles, and they'll, they'll pick up someone that might have had a broken hip, or put them up, take them to, say, World Force for the rehab, and then bring them back from there from the rehab. Anybody else have anything?
The only other comment, I'm sure, that I noticed today that we have to plan again, we have a lot of parking spaces. Perhaps you could add some additional landscape islands to break up the long roads of parking?
Yes, as a matter.
And I know the wiring's some down.
Right, right.
But I just thought there were other areas that perhaps you could add some additional.
Yeah, yes, and in particular, there's a, there's a rear loading area, for instance, and we were thinking that we might want to screen that a little bit better with some plantings that would go across, so that would help screen that from the street and back.
Right, and I think you have around the 38 spaces on the right side of the. I think it's the east side. Yeah, 38 spaces.
On the top there, yeah.
On the top. I just thought if we could add a couple islands, break that up with some landscape that you can improve the site.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we were, I was just talking with Jack about that today, about enhancing the landscaping all around the facility. And I did a detailed analysis of the exterior of the building today, and identified areas that we might be able to improve the landscaping. A lot of it's overgrown now, just rip that out, put new fresh installation in. And that's, that's, that benefits everybody, obviously.
And like, how many spots are you going to have for ADA vans to be able to? I mean, obviously, an ADA parking spot has to be wired for a wheelchair lift to pull down and whatnot. How many of those spots you going to have?
Well, when we designed these, we, we take, each of the parking spaces right now is 10 feet wide. So what we do is we, we make, in fact, the idea is that we could use that entire front row there if needed. And then on the other, around the front of the building as well, for, for ADA accessible parking. But for van accessible, we don't differentiate that between, we, we van accessible and regular. We just identify the access aisle, and it's, and it's 10 feet wide, as, as are all the parking spaces. So any space could be van accessible, and then we also have a nice drop-off there that's showing up for that as well.
I'm sorry? No, Chair, we're speaking a lot, a lot of old people, you know, they might have a scooter, and they have to have, and they'll go up the side door of their van, so they, the ramp slips down, and their scooter comes out, and stuff like that, so I just want to, no, no, I'm stopping, that's just a regular.
And they usually need at least an eight-foot wide area, and we're providing more on that, yeah, yeah.
Are you planning on having, like, what's like, security, like a doorman or anything like that?
Uh, the facilities, all of our facilities have security cameras and surveillance and so forth. As far as a separate person to, like a guard or something like that, I don't think we could really have that.
Will you have somebody monitoring the cameras or whatever?
Yeah, there's a, there's an administration area there that, yeah.
And if we were to, first of all, CD, if we were to grant you your use variance, what is your timeline, sir, as far as maybe getting the project underway?
Well, the objective would be to close on the transaction yet this year, and then start the renovation immediately. We'd like to attempt to phase the project to some extent in terms of having occupants move in while other floors are being completed. This building is conducive towards that kind of a phased schedule. So it's a very quick schedule, from our perspective.
Agreed. And what's the idea? Who, Mr. Rowan?
I have no, yeah, no further questions. It seems that if the relief that you were wanting to grant, or act on the use variance tonight, I think the applicant did say one of the conditions could be that, or would be that it is an age-restricted facility, or to leave, Mr. Rowan said 55 and over.
Correct.
It would be up to the board whether you would want to act on the use variance tonight, subject to an approval of a final site plan.
Absolutely, we wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, if you do that, then maybe to problems down the road. It's always better to try to do everything all at once, but that's, you know, it's up to this board. I wanted to say, one thing, the proposed use that they are proposing under case law existing in New Jersey is what's known as an inherently beneficial public use, which means the state more or less encourages the use in commercial or special economic zones. So it's kind of, if you would approve a site plan, it would be kind of hard to deny the applicant a use variance in this instance. I know the application itself says it's a commercial zone. John's review letter says a special economic development. Is it, is it a special economic development zone? It's not, okay. It doesn't make the application effective, but just for my records, I just wanted to.
Well, John, are you looking for, obviously, we're not changing the footprint of the building. Are you looking for more of a site plan than what we, I mean, obviously, we just handed these an hour ago. That's my only problem. I don't, I don't like to force things down the, down the numbers stroke, and say, oh, you got an hour, and take a look at these, and tell me what you think. You know, that's my, that's my only.
Making like, they say conditioned upon it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we're having a problem myself, it's just me speaking. I'm, I'm aloof to the project, I think it's wonderful. And I also would like to have the opportunity to go out to the site with, with these, take a look at them, like I do. I try to go to every site before I have hearing, and from my own application, take a look and say yea or nay, or, or have some, some bearing on the conversation. Ask, do all the members have a right to do that? And go out, take a look, and see, and make their notes, and then come back for site, for site plan. I know this is going to be a major site change, it's not going to be anything crazy, you know, but, you know, I don't know. Dave, I guess.
I think that the board is okay with the use, that granting the use variance this evening would be appropriate, contingent on them submitting a site plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I think is, is problem, because though when it's out the opportunity to go out to the site, I don't think, I don't think it's going to be a problem with the use. I know these children want to move forward with their project, with their financing, with their planning, all that good stuff. So once they get the use variance, they can at least have some, some degree of sure that we're going to move forward with the project. And again, I don't think it's going to be a problem. I think they're very, going to be accommodating, we want lighting, or trees, or islands, you know, I think we just get together.
We're going to need more detailed plans when it comes to the site plan. Because ultimately, the borough engineer has some expected, got a detail, also got a grading plan, and make sure all the grids work.
So at this point in time, Mr. Rowan, I'd like to entertain a motion for the use variance only this evening? Yes, we're open to the vote, okay?
Yeah, okay.
All right, so there's only three handsome guys out there, but if any ghost out there wishing to speak on this application, and this application only, please, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry, buddy. Please, please come forward and be heard.
Let's make a motion to close the public portion.
Motion made by Mr. Op, seconded by Mr. Shion, all in favor? All right, all right, Mr. Rowan.
Okay, the board, the application is for a use variance to permit an adult senior housing and daycare to find older residents. It's the testimony of the nature of the operation and the, the facilities that would be intended to be constructed, constructed at the location. The board can, as with any use variance, attach any conditions that you wish at this time. And it appears that one of the conditions would be that it is age-restricted, 55 and over, and the use variance, if granted tonight, is subject and conditioned upon final site plan approval being, being granted by this board in a later, later date. As I indicated before, a board can act and move on such use variances if the board believes that it is a beneficial and inherently, inherently beneficial use, and it's an asset to the community. That's one of the major, major criteria that a board has to, has to be satisfied with in granting such a variance.
I'd like to also read into the testimony that the resident, I'm sorry, that the applicant did testify that there would be no intention on using this facility as a method of planning.
That's correct, and, well, you understand that if he did, the applicant did that in a row, you'd have to come back before us for that type of.
Right, just, just so the residents are watching this tape, so they know that we did ask the question, the question was asked and answered, and we'll go with that.
Now, Dave, just one quick question, then. If, if for any reason they decide to sell the property at some future date, they cannot, because of this variance, use that as a multiple-family rental unit or anything, they have to.
No, we're, this is a use variance to provide adult, senior adult housing and senior adult daycare services. Now, I want to add, the board, under special economic development, substance of use canceling and treatment centers are permitted. It's permitted use. This applicant has indicated that that's not his intention. I think by the presentation, this is an adult, a step down from your house to alternate senior living before you're ready for assisted living. It's, it's what I call the death. The death of life.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to grant the use variance.
Second motion.
All right, Mr. Vanilla has motion.
What's the condition?
What condition?
Seconded by Ms. Bushen, roll call, please.
Chair, we're cleaning up.
Yes.
Ms. Bushen, yes. Mr. Pachaski?
Yes.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yes.
Mr. Wapoli?
Yes.
Mr. Verden?
Yes.
And Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations on wishing a lot of luck.
We are most appreciative of your support, and we look forward to working with you on this facility going forward.
Really great, Jack, thank you so much. He's been noisy back there, he's, he's playing with the court. Yeah. I wasted much of it.
Make sure he looks at John's review letter.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
All right, and then.
Well, give us a couple of dates to sort things out. Depends how quickly they can move.
All right. They got a roof, you old liar.
Good.
They granted them the use, they have to go back to the site. Look, here's the, look out for the street, there's so many.
All right, all right, Dave, yeah. Sure, thanks.
Maybe I'll move my mother there.
122.
You can't get that many in there, I'm sure. All right, real quick, I don't want, I won't hold Dan here, we're just convincing. Is there anyone? All right, motion by Mr. Offly, seconded by Mr., I'm sorry, Liberty, look at it, Manella, calling Liberty, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any, anything else to go over? All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Mr. Offly and by Ms. Kusian at 8:10, meaning adjourn.